All right, so we'll call the meeting of the Shelburne School Board to order here at 7:05. Almost right on time. So, we have a few adjustments to the agenda where we're gonna move item 5.4 up to the top so we can talk about Act 46 and progress to date. I was expecting that Jeff Solomon and Kim Schmidt would come in, but they're not. So, I don't know where they are. Other adjustments are 5.5, we're gonna discuss next actions for the Facilities Committee. 5.6, we're going to get our baseline budget. And 7.2, we're going to discuss a January 19th special meeting of all school boards to discuss Act 46 and the status of the articles and the document that we need to submit. So, that'll be a special meeting. Just so you know, January 19th is a Monday. January 20th is our joint meeting with the town to present the budget, just so you know. And I don't think anyone is here. John, are you here to speak to the board, or are you just as a member of the audience?
Yes, I'm here for the special agenda.
Okay, then you guys, okay. And you're our
Yes.
GOB and after-school activities. Got it, okay. So, first we'll go to 5.4 and we'll just go through Act 46. Thank you to everyone who came to the meeting last week, the Act 46 forum. I believe there were four concerned committee members, or townspeople who were there, and then the rest were other school board and committee members. Yay, here they are.
[inaudible]
Oh, that's right, you guys, okay. So, I'm just gonna go in here and get the notes that Colleen had sent us to go through the status of the committee. Tim and I are on the committee. Russ is also on the committee. So, if you wanna chime in here, just let me know. So, so far, we've, you know, Colleen's already, you know, she summed up some of this in her report to the CSSU board. A couple of you guys weren't there. We've had six full study committee meetings every other, no, every Monday? Is it every Monday?
Seems like it.
It is every Monday. I could only wish it was every other Monday. Seven subcommittee meetings to do with communications, financials, and governance. Those are on Wednesday mornings generally. And so, communications has generally been creating a website, FAQs, and then also creating the general presentation that I worked from last week. They have, we've done two forums, one at Williston and one at Shelburne. Williston was attended with similar numbers. And there's one in Heinsburg, and then there's one in Charlotte, and other committee members are going. I'm going to the Charlotte one on December 1st. I'm not sure when the Heinsburg one is, but if people are interested in going to that, just let me know. We try to have other townspeople there, because there's other folks on the committee that have different areas of expertise. It was Act 46 meetings.
Yeah.
There?
I think so.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Community Act 46 forum.
In Heinsburg?
Yeah.
November 19th.
November 19th?
Yeah.
Thanks, Cal. Okay. Which is later this week, isn't it? That's Thursday. So, we just received the financial models this week, and those were pretty, pretty high level. And what they took into account were projected numbers, the assumptions were changes in equalized pupils per year, changes in education spending per year, and how your grand list in your town would change. So, the assumptions that Bob Mason put in was a negative 1% change in pupils, plus 2% increase in spending per year, and no change in the grand list. And I know that our CLA has been slightly below 1, which means our houses are selling for more than assessed value, so that's kind of something you could change when they do the reassessment. But, so the model spat out that if you, if we did an accelerated merger, and the tax incentives off the education tax rate are 10, 8, 6, 4, and 2, the resulting benefit to Shelburne taxpayers would be respectively 7, 5, 3, and 1, and in the fifth year, there would be a 1 cent increase. So...
But I think it's important to note, in that modeling, it does not take into account any potential cost savings through consolidation.
Exactly, exactly. And the reason why the numbers are slightly, you know, they're not 10, 8, 6, 5, and 2, is that, 6, 4, and 2, is that our cost per pupil is below the average, so that's what is influencing that downward.
Well, the average of CSSU.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, those, the, it's a pretty rudimentary model, but it just gives us an idea. You pass these around, and you can look at the other towns. So, that's, you know, and they're also trying to work through property and facilities and assets and debt, and that, they haven't quite quantified all of that yet, but that's the next step that finance is trying to work on. So, the remaining function is governance. And governance is, I think there's 13 to 18 articles. I can't remember the right number. Do you know? Yeah, something in the high teens. But it's laid out in all the, you know, all the aspects of how you're gonna govern the school, how you're gonna organize it, and how you're gonna lay things out. And, you know, it includes things like board, board structure. And you heard Colleen lay out that government, the Governance Committee's gonna recommend a board structure for a consolidated CSSU of 12 people. And that would be four reps for Williston, three for Shelburne, and then two each for Heinsburg and Charlotte, and then one for St. George. And the size of the board has to be between 12 and 18. And we heard a lot of, we had a lot of conversation, and came to 12 just 'cause it's, you know, 18 sounded like it would be too difficult. And then we thought it had to be an odd number, and then we realized it didn't, so then we landed on 12. But I also feel like there's a lot of psychology in how those numbers are laid out. And I think, you know, to me, it was important for Charlotte to not be at the bottom with just one vote. I really thought that was, was not a good idea. There was one model that had Williston and Shelburne with four, and Heinsburg and Charlotte with two. I felt like that was the big kids versus the little kids. So...
Does any discussion have it at large? If it would just be voted on across the whole district, as opposed to by town by town, or...
So, there was that. And we've been looking at other articles for the Essex-Westford, and then the, what's the other one? The Jericho?
Chittinese.
Chittinese. See, yes, yeah. So, they had some language in there about, you know, considering that in the future.
But nobody started it?
But, you know, they're saying they wanna, they wanna set a particular structure, and then consider at-large representation possibly in, I think, you know, three, four, five years down the road. We discussed that. I think it's important to, to keep things on a town level at the very start. And then after a few years, we'll realize that this isn't, like, as it consolidates, it's not a, it's not a town issue anymore. It's a school district issue.
Yeah, I was thinking more of a hybrid approach, not going all the one way or all the other, but more, you know, you got the reps from each town, and then a handful of at-large.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's interesting, 'cause an at-large voting would be, you know, anybody from any town could do that. And then, you know, are you familiar with any of the, like, any of that in other situations? Like, what would prevent all four people being from Williston, if you had four at-large voter, voting? Or you could have that.
You could have that. I guess the idea would be that those people are supposed to be representing the district as a whole, as opposed to be an advocate for a particular town's interest. I always just had thought about balancing a more global interest versus a town-specific focus.
I mean, I think the other thing that we're, the group was trying to keep in mind is, you know, this still has to be voted on by the respective towns. So, to initially start out, we need to put some structure in there. But also, the idea was not to hand tie the future board to make changes, so we don't wanna put too much structure in where, you know, it's prescriptive. We want them to kind of find their way in the world.
Maybe an evolution down the road, as Dave mentioned.
Right. Because it is, even though it shouldn't be, it's very territorial at this point, you know. What's in it for my town versus, you know. What's not in it for another town, maybe.
Exactly.
Well, I know, remember that one of the issues that came up in our Shelburne meeting was the, a bond vote. If Williston had to go out and go out for a $15 million bond this year, and it was a whole district, and the whole district had to share in that cost, then how would people vote on that? And how would the towns vote on that? And, I mean, that seems like that's gonna be, it's sticky enough as it is in our own towns, but when it's district-wide, that could...
And it's, you know, it's a fundamental shift in the way people think about the schools, that it's no longer the Williston School, Shelburne School. It is the SU School District with buildings in multiple communities. And that's gonna take some time.
I mean, see how that plays itself out, because again, I think...
I think it'll just be a mental challenge that I don't, some people may never get over, to be perfectly honest.
Well, because they're still neighborhood schools, essentially.
But we might wanna change the name from the Shelburne Community School to the Barbara Snelling School, or something like that, 'cause she's, you know...
Makes it more generic.
Mm-hmm.
I was thinking of calling it the Snelling School, like, you know, Chittin and South Snelling School District. I was thinking that.
Interesting.
You know, the whole thing.
[laughing]
Um...
China, I don't know.
So, there's cultural issues that we have to overcome.
Yeah, and...
And again, the role of the committee is not to have all the answers to all the questions up front. It's to put a framework in place that we can then submit to the state, and then submit to the voters to either vote it up or down.
Yeah.
Also, really, it's very early in the process.
Yeah.
A little of meetings to the whole.
Yeah.
So, the incentive, I mean, the short-term incentives are rather clear, which are great and nice, and I would love to be living in St. George in particular, just from a benefit standpoint. I guess, you know, do we have a clear sense of the non-tax, non-incentive-based benefits at this point?
Like, like what?
Share the Spanish.
No, I mean, I think, those are to be determined. I mean, we've talked a lot about, you know, how we use facilities, how the overall, you know, management of the organization is. You know, if you look at the different functions that we have that are in five different buildings, could that be, you know, one overseeing the five different buildings?
It just seems like selling it to the voters at some point, you'd wanna have some long-term benefit, not just the short-term change law or the tax.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that there's, there's opportunities to spread the load out among all the five buildings. And it's a slippery slope to walk, because, you know, we had our meeting, and staff had their concerns about people moving between buildings. But the reality is that there, you could redraw geographic lines to serve particular schools, to level the usage in that, you know, say, get some more students into Charlotte schools, ease the pressure off of Williston and Heinsburg. And it's not like, and I don't think it's gonna be something where you envision a model where people are going to be moved. I think it's a situation where people are gonna wanna move within different schools, perhaps. And then also, just being able to reduce the fixed cost per student by, you know, putting more students in a particular school. You know, I walked down a road and didn't realize I was describing magnet schools in one meeting. But, you know, you could have, you know, maybe some schools have particular programs that other schools don't, and kids can go into that. And, you know, that can be language, that can be music, that can be science, it can be a lot of different things. But it's one of those things that you could leverage by being able to move people around to different buildings if they wanted to, that you can't do right now with our particular, with our contract right now. So...
And I think it's clear to the people on the committee that the charge is not this potential five-year reduction or incentive, if you will. It's how can we improve the outcomes of the students? And that's really what it's, I think, the committee, and I know Elaine and the administration are focused on, how can we turn this into a better learning opportunity for the kids in all the communities?
Also, if you don't consolidate, you need to prove to them and show to them why it's better if you don't. And that would be, I'm not sure that would be easy for us to prove that, since, you know, and, and then do we get, you know, dinged for that? And to me, that's an incentive in some ways. It's like, okay, if this is inevitable, we have to do it anyhow.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that if you, even if you say you don't have to, at 2019, something could happen to you, that you don't have a decision.
Exactly. And they might decide, well, we're actually gonna take Charlotte and move it to Virgents. And to me, that's, I would imagine, who, I would imagine people in Charlotte would rather have control over what they're gonna do and see their future, versus having someone else step in and say, this is what we're gonna have you do.
But again, we don't have to consolidate. What we have to do is put it to the voter, and then they decide. And then, it will be the will of the state in 2019 what happens.
And also, there's a couple of different ways you can consolidate.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Can you explain that?
So, there's, you can, so we have the four school districts, Williston, Charlotte, Shelburne, and Heinsburg, and St. George. You could combine, if you go to a vote, everyone votes yes, you have a consolidated school district. You know, one superintendent, one board, everything's done. If you do that vote, and St. George says no, everyone else says yes. You have a modified union school district, where you have a board that represents everybody but St. George. And then you have a CSSU that represents everyone in St. George.
Well, that's what happens in Chittinese, right?
Exactly. Exactly.
Yeah, but those St. George kids go to CBU and they're high school, or do they stay and make their own little high school?
No, they still go, they would probably still be the same arrangement. But they're not gonna then tuition, it's not, I mean...
It's kind of just, it ends up being, I think, in what happened with Chittinese, they kind of got this awkward governance situation, 'cause Huntington's kind of still got their own board, but they're still part of Chittinese, but not really, but kind of is...
And that awkward situation can exist if St. George says no and Charlotte says no. Or St. George says no and Heinsburg says no. But as soon as three school districts say no, then it fails.
Yep.
So, and that's, so those are the different organizations. And they're, you know, once you come away from everyone saying yes, it kind of looks like where we are right now, almost. But what's important is, like, we have a strong superintendent, and we have a strong central staff that works together well. So, we're getting the benefits of a lot of consolidation right now. But that could change, and there's no amount of, there's certain parts of the legislation that aren't in place to prevent some of the work that we've already done from falling apart. So, that's why, you know, if we don't do anything, we may not reap all the benefits. So... Am I winging this? Good, I mean, like...
Nice update.
Do you have any, do you have any questions?
I think the only other X-factor to talk about with regards to, you know, the tax rates is the impact of, again, as I understand it, you know, the overall education, ed fund pool is not changing. So, you know, if everyone jumps at the same time, the statewide tax rate may rise enough so the net benefit is zero, at least hypothetically speaking. And so, that's, that's one of the things that I think we wanna talk about when we're describing this, you know...
But at the same time, other people could consolidate, reduce their fixed cost per student.
Right.
The other part of the ed fund that we're paying for could contract, and then our overall education spending could go down.
Right, right.
So...
It's my understanding that there are so many districts that are just simply not in a position where they can get this done.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
In the kind of timeframe that we're talking about.
Yeah, the timeframe.
No, sounds good, sounds good.
Did you? I thought you had one more. I thought there was a commenter.
It's, uh...
No, you're good.
Just clearing my throat.
Okay. That's good. All right, so we'll let you guys, you guys have any other questions? Let's go back to CVU.
Ready to graduate.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
Yeah.
Who's visiting here?
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm just fine.
You are? Okay.
No, I'm, I'm gonna listen to the active school piece.
Got it. Okay. Are you Charlotte or Williston?
So, I'm co-principal at Heinsburg.
I was 0 for 2 on that. There we go. I recognize, all right, thank you.
[laughing]
You'll know him if we merge.
[laughing]
That's right. That's right. Okay, so, I didn't turn on the computer. Do you guys have computer slides or anything?
I don't, yeah.
Okay.
Probably what they needed.
All right.
All right.
Ready?
So, we'll do the, yeah, let's, we'll do it.
So, I just wanted to let you know that unfortunately, Alan is ill, so he couldn't be here tonight, so just... So, Sue, and Pat, and Jeff are here, and Lorian is here. So, they will, go ahead. And Sue, are you gonna start?
I am, here you go.
Awesome. And I think you've all met Sue Schaefer before. She's our behavioral interventionist.
Yeah?
Here, sure, just cozy up to me here.
How about right here?
Let me just go like that. That's just my agendas.
Probably just move the mic closer to her.
Um, gosh, I feel like I live here, don't I? Just kidding. So, I want to sort of go through all of this. Alan was gonna be here to go through the first couple of pages, which are just, you know, a nice little filler, that you can all read about who we are. I think you guys know already. And I think Pat is gonna follow up, and Lorian with the IAS program. The spiel, that great quotes that Alan put about the co-curriculars, sort of the meat of the thing is, starting for me on the third page, and I'll start with the SCAT program, and Shelburne Kids Act After School, it's actually activities. Alan had that wrong, but that's okay.
But it's SCAT.
It's SCAT. Not to be confused with the S-C-A-T. This is S-K. Just make that clear. So, he asked me to sort of put together a list of some of the past things, and the asterisk ones, by the way, are the ones that are upcoming, that that will be the session that starts, the 1st of December, the first week in December, second session. Of course, after I sent him the list, I remembered the garage band and the build a computer, and although I dare say we won't have the garage band one again, because the, all the people around are just about to kick this out. But at any rate, these are all different kinds of things that the 6th through 8th grade have experienced. And we, I sort of have it on a rotation, so probably except for garage band, they all come around about every two, three years. And this year, something a little different. Starting in the second session, we're gonna offer a couple of classes for 5th grade. We did that once before. And this time, we'll offer one, which will be a Shackleton Expedition. So, that means that kids can find out what hard tack is, and they can find out what dried meat is, et cetera, et cetera. And they're gonna map out and build a topographical model and so on of the, of the Shackleton Expedition. And then also, a jewelry class. So, a couple of 5th grade classes will be offered. And I just wanna point out the little bits class. Jeff was gracious enough to go in with me to, to sort of, to buy a, a large kit, so that we can really use it for a whole class. And, and we have already partnered up for the first session, so that we had the middle school kids working with the younger kids, and hence, that we, again, he was gracious enough to split the cost with me, so that from the SCAT budget, we didn't have to spend as much. And they use it, and we use it. So, that was the first of, I hope, probably many partnerships of that sort. Anyway, when you go on to the next one, those are the figures, those are the numbers. And as you can see, the, the numbers are going up. In 1314, we did offer a, a 5th grade class. And I have to tell you, pretty much right now, we're topped out. And I, and I mean that to say that we don't really, well, I have to turn kids away. I have to, I have to put a limit on the classes, because we just simply don't have the wherewithal to do more than we're doing. So, so 275, I, I think is really top end for, for the year, for the program, because it's, it's a staffing question and a supply question, and so on, and so on. So, anyway, those are the numbers. And the last one, now, we're, we're getting away from SCAT, although that certainly is, you know, that's the 6th through 8th grade now, this year, 5th grade. So, the last page is a list of all of the various clubs and activities who use the building. I'm not sure that you all are necessarily aware of this, but at any rate, so these are all homework clubs, spelling bee, the do-good club, mentoring. And these are outside of the typical school day. So, in other words, all of these take place either after school, some, a few before school, and then, of course, in the summer. And as you can see, it's, it's a rather large list, and it is growing, certainly. We are, I just, just, just this year, we started having a, a program with Rice High School, where, where a couple of the kids who are Shelburne kids come back over and work with the younger kids. So, there are a number of things going on with this as well. So, again, there's just all kinds of stuff going on. And just flip it over one more time, I got ahead of myself. Actually, here we go. So, the, this organization is, the last one is all, all of the, the stuff with, that is orchestrated by the school. The last one is, is all stuff that comes from outside of the school. So, in other words, ready, set, run, teen ops, flight school, camp invention, all of those come from outside of the school. And we, and, and actually, more specifically, this year, I'm the one who would, would place them in the buildings, and in some instances, do all the registration for them, like, pretty much do everything to make them happy and want them to come back. And so, we have, as you can see, a couple of different rocketry classes, and then a quadcopter class, and that's where the Rice mentoring comes in. And this year, it's, thanks to Kathy, I might add, I'm actually really trying to build this, the partnerships, excuse me, partnerships up. So, for example, she had referred me to a lady that teach, I'm hoping will teach art classes. I'm talking to her. And, and I'm actually, I'm hoping also to have Kathy come and do some stone working classes. So, just remember that. And, you know, and actually, in a couple of weeks, we're gonna have a circus arts class start. So, there's lots of things in the works. And, you know, the point is to build the community, as well as certainly to build in the lives of the kids. So, some of these things aren't necess, they're not all kid-oriented. So, for example, the, the adult classes for the art, and, and some of the circus arts things, if adults want them, we'll be offering more and more all the time to, to adults. And the same with music lessons. We're doing, for the first time, we're doing piano lessons through a grant. And hopefully, we will get a teacher to, you know, to, to do some classes as well. I'm talking currently with three different teachers, so I'm hoping that we will, at the very least, get one teacher to, to also give music lessons there. Does anybody have any questions?
Sure. So, you know, this is a passion of mine, so I will, I will hit you right up on this. So, you know, this is a passion of mine, so I will, um, I will hit you right up on this. So, in terms of major constraints you have right now, you have, so, you know, I'm totally on board, this is what differentiates a good school from a great school, you know, the work you do is fabulous and, you know, um, and it's too limited from my standpoint. So, you, you talked about constraints at two seventy-five, so can you talk a little bit about, you know, in an ideal world, what would happen and how, and think about how we get from existing world to ideal world?
So, just so you know, Alan's gonna kill me because he said, now, now, just.
Don't answer Matt's question.
There's a reason I put something in his food earlier.
When you look at three classes of middle schools of eighty to a hundred kids, I mean, my quick math. Tell me, almost eight times three is two hundred and forty, I mean, two hundred and thirty-six kids is almost.
Two hundred and fifty-one kids in six.
But how are you, but how are you actually, are you talking about individual enrollments or are you talking about?
So, if a kid does a quadcopter class and does another class, he's counted twice, right?
No, actually, no, in other words, if a kid does a class, but, but, well, yes and no. So, for example, in any given week, we might have, uh, well, this time we'll have eight separate classes. So, if the kid goes to two classes, then he, he's only counted once. He's not count.
So, like, two thirty-six is, two hundred and thirty-six kids did at least one thing out of this class.
Yes, that's correct.
Over the course of year, yeah.
Yeah, so in other words, he might have done ten things, but he's only counted once.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Per session, and there are three sessions for, during the year, that's how it works.
So, if they did three, spring, fall, winter, they would be counted three times?
Yes, it's just the same as sports, exactly the same, they do it the same way. So, they're just counted once and many kids, by the way, do, um, take two and sometimes three classes and I have to say, it started out actually as a Monday and Wednesday class and now it's sort of morphed into, uh, into Tuesday and, and Thursday and once in a while Friday, so, um, you know, it's, it certainly is, has gotten bigger.
No, I think that, so again, I, you know, I, again, I think what you're doing is great. So, I'll give you the, I mean, circle back as a parent, um, and I was talking with, uh, Steve Trombley earlier today about, you know, one of the biggest challenges I have personally speaking, selfishly speaking as a parent, is communication issues. Just understand what's going on when, and I think that's an organizational issue that we have to work on better as a school. I think, you know, funding, we've talked a little bit about your funding, which in my mind is not adequate. So, how do we, you know, in a very budget-constrained year and environment, how do we get you a bunch more money? And, you know, I've also been fundamentally an advocate of pay-to-play to some degree because I think it incents people to partake in these things. I think the other term, in terms is, uh, you know, recruiting, and I think there's, you know, tons of support. I mean, for the, for most parents or for a lot of parents in Shelburne, the choice is, you know, do a cool, do, you know, so my son transitioned from track in the fall to a program at, um, Shelburne Fitness, which, you know, we're paying through the nose on and I'd much rather pay through the nose to SCS than to Shelburne Fitness, not that I have anything against those guys. And so, you know, looking at creative ways to get more funding for these after-school programs from a population that is very actively looking for interesting things for their students is something I think we need to be more engaged on and interested in. You know, the communication thing we talked about, also recruiting, um, you know, there's again a wealth of capabilities in the, in the population, you know, a few years ago, I taught a Lego robotics after-school program to three, four, or four, five, whatever they were at the time. And, uh, you know, finding parents that are willing to engage for a four-week session, two-week session, however many-week session and getting that communication out because right now, you know, right now, I don't think we do a lot of recruiting in the parent community. We do it for things like, um, hands-on nature, but beyond, once you get sort of past the third grade, I don't hear much other than, you know, some fundraising opportunities. So, I think that's a big opportunity for us. And I think, you know, getting a group of parents together to help support you in this endeavor from all those standpoints, fundraising, recruitment, um, uh, solicitation of faculty, something that, you know, as a board, that, you know, I don't know that we necessarily take a position on so much, but I think individually, we should, uh, take the lead on.
Um, let me just really quickly address, the first thing is the communication, so I agree with you. I do write some articles for the newspaper and then I do, um, some, that, it's not alert now, it's the other one, whatever that you use now, that one.
High five.
Yep, we, we now are putting out, you know, I wanna be careful that I don't overuse that as well, but we are using that and, um, and then, of course, there's the monitor in the hallway and, and there's, um, and, and now, for the first time, when the new SCAT session comes out, we have to, you haven't heard about the second one because the, the sports teams have to be chosen first. And once the sports teams are chosen, then literally the next day, the word goes out and, and, um, just this year, for the first time, we were able to do it actually online so that everybody got the same email at once. So, that's, that communication piece, I feel, is gonna get better. With regard to the public and, um, support, the difficulty, I, I mean, I have, you actually, um, not only talked to the PTO over the last few years, but also certainly, community members and it, always the difficulty comes back to that, um, three o'clock start time, three o'clock to four fifteen. And, and unless you live in Shelburne and can leave your job, or, or sometimes we have, we've had retired people, but, um, there again, it's difficult, um, in the wintertime, but it's, it's also just a difficult time of the day to, to, you know, but, but let me tell you, I am, anybody interested, I'm, I'm your guy. So, you know, I'm, I'm hoping, um.
Right.
You guys will line up at the door, or at the very least, get other people to line up at my door. And, and, you know, you have an idea and we will, I can certainly probably figure out how to make it happen with regard to students. And, um, again, not only is it a community builder, but when I look back, um, I, I keep track of, well, I mean, I don't stay in touch with, but students stay in touch with me and a lot of the things that they've taken, for example, architecture, they're architects today, you know, we drug them down to Norwich, we, we, we took them to Middlebury, we, on and on and on and some of the very things, um, that they, Alice two point O, some of those kids are programmers now, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, what I wanna say is, th- this is the connection and not only that, but for me, it says it's important that the, the socio-economic ladder, if you will, doesn't matter here, it just doesn't matter. This is when everybody is together and I love that, I love how it breaks down barriers and kids do things together for the sake of the love of doing it, not because, um, of, of other reasons that aren't quite so, um, nice to talk about. So, at any rate, I am absolutely mad, open to any, any community and, and I, you know, we'll maybe talk again sometime and we'll, we'll pursue those things.
Right, no, sounds good. And I, I will say, you know, again, this is not to pick on Patty or Alan, but, you know, I think the communication thing is something that's cool, I really need to work on in a different way. And, um, so, this is not a, Sue needs to send more stuff out. And I, and I don't think it's appropriate fundamentally for you to be, you know, spamming everyone all the time. It's really, at the school level, we need to do more in terms of, you know, leveraging the technology that exists out there that we have access to and posting stuff electronically so that, you know, cause, you know, so that we can go off to the school band next time instead of hanging out here.
There you go.
So, I just had a question, kind of playing off your last point about the blending of socioeconomic things, I was looking back at, at Alan's page of benefits of this, I mean, do you feel that the more at-risk or more socio-economically disadvantaged kids are, get, playing in this arena as much as the?
Yeah.
So, you are kind of reaching that population effectively, you think?
As a matter of fact, I, I, I sort of had an idea of how it was gonna work, I, I've been in on the SCAT program from the beginning and I, 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 my ideas, if you will, or, or what I thought was gonna happen, didn't. In fact, it is absolutely the gamut, I mean, it is, it is everyone. And I also thought that in initially, that we wouldn't get any sports kids and what I've seen happen is that, um, some of the sports kids don't do sports because they, for a certain session, you know, they might play soccer, but then instead of basketball, they might do some of this, um, of, of the other things because it's where their love is. And, and absolutely, I, I am seeing the gamut of every, um, certainly every level of, of economic, you know, however you wanna describe it, absolutely. And it's one of the few things, I know sports too, but, but perhaps more this, um, because of the bus, for example, we have a late bus and I have to tell you, there again, it has made so much difference because, um, you know, there's always those kids whose parents can pick them up, but you know, there's a lot of kids whose parents can't pick them up. And I have to tell you, um, what a way to break down barriers and I've seen it myself, I've seen it over the years, more all the time. Are you listening, Jeff, so that you're gonna put a program like this in, uh, Heinsberg? So, I, so I, um, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I was.
Sue, didn't you mention also that there's a scholarship for those kids in these, for these classes if they're needs-based?
Yep, for the, again, Alan told me not to mention money, but that's okay.
I mentioned it.
Okay, good, so, boy, so, so for example, um, if the, the Rocket Club, I'll, that's a, a case in point, so, you know, theoretically, the school would get twenty-five percent of the, of the fee, um, and that's, so, the, there's the materials and then the teacher gets money and of all of that money, we get twenty-five percent. Well, here's how it really works, um, for that twenty-five percent, of course, we have the janitor and we have, um, and we have me who does all of the registration, all of the money, all the, like, the only thing that, the, the teacher needs to do is show up. However, then, um, there are a lot of kids that can't do it and what we do is, um, we go by the free and reduced list and anybody that wants to apply absolutely may and we put that money right back into the, into the program so that, um, there's just, there isn't a, a, I can't think of an, any time when kids have been turned down. So, you're right, there is absolutely a way in which the scholarships, and it's the same, it'll be the same for piano lessons, um, that it'll be put right back in so that it's not a money-making per se, it's just simply an enablement so that, again, the kids can, the kids can be shoulder to shoulder, no matter, um, you know, who they are and what level they're at in that sense.
Can I add one piece to that? So, uh, IAS also, if, if they're an IAS-registered child and they wanna participate in Sue's program, they, uh, we, we don't feel like it's right to charge the parent's choice, so if they're an IAS, could they go for that day for free after that enrichment piece is done? So, we're very aware of the, the financial implications. And just, uh, I think it's been mentioned, Sue did come to me and said, you gotta do this, you are so lucky to have Sue. She's the most passionate person.
I didn't put him up to this, just so you know.
No, in terms of, like, not only is she doing it for Shelburne, but she's like, Jeff, you're crazy if you don't do this at Heinsberg, so, like, you won't find.
You wanna be ashamed of yourself.
Yeah, you won't, you won't, you won't find a more passionate person about this.
Can you tell us what IAS means?
So, I'm gonna, if, if you're ready, if you're ready to.
I imagine, uh, thank you, imaginary after-school, okay.
So, I'm Pat Wilder, I'm the, uh, director, um, of the IAS program and I have been there for three years. So, I think I've been there since the beginning of the program and I'll pass some, um, information.
Do you want to hand them out for you?
Well, we still call it part two, a lot of parents call it part two, but, three years. Right, right, yes, I'm the new Lorian. It's been, uh, um, a really great pleasure working, um, in this program, I just absolutely love it. And, uh, when you get your papers going around, um, and I'll let Jeff talk to maybe why we're so unique, but you certainly can read about that. And I was looking at this in twenty thirteen, the program started with sixty kids and here we are in twenty fifteen and every single day, we have a hundred kids in the program. And often weeks, I have other parents that are asking for, you know, when is there gonna be a slot open? And I said, well, you know, we don't refuse anybody, let's take your name and we try to fit them in as soon as possible. So, we don't like to turn anybody away, so it's really, really worked really great. The parent feedback has been wonderful, um, we're getting ready actually to get another, um, survey out to parents to see how things are going, um, mid-year, so we're excited about that. Just wanted to share that, um, I'm the director, there's also two assistant directors, one in the K through second grade and then one third and up, which we call the clubhouse. Uh, and then we have eight other staff. So, there are actually ten of us and then we have two or three subs. And our subs, we do use often, um, especially if we have extra, um, activities going on. Next week, we have two full days of program, so we, uh, usually do field trips, so we like to have a little extra staffing for those days. Our daily routine is pretty much the same every day, although our activities change and we're pretty much all about, um, kids having choices, but staying in a very safe and fun environment. And, uh, I guess the biggest task that I have in my position is making sure that kids are safe and having fun, but also kind of extending their school day so that there is an academic piece to almost all of the activities that are offered. So, we like to see ourselves as an extension to the school day. So, I think we do a pretty good job, kids are tired when they get home, they're excited about the next day and parents are always saying, I don't know what you do with these kids, but when I get here, they don't wanna go home. So, I think we're doing something right. I see the program, um, expanding, we certainly, um, have to make room for more kids. So, looking at staffing, space, space is always, I mean, we've done really well, um, with the help of Patty and Alan, finding spaces. During the basketball season, of course, it's hardest finding a gym. So, we're trying to find, you know, other activities where the kids can, you know, still stay active and in a more enclosed area, so that's always challenging. But it's a great program.
Now, do you still have the, are you still limited by, at a hundred students due to licensing? Or is it more room and staffing?
Well, that's a really good question.
Cause there was a time where it was, there was a license thing that you.
Yeah, the license currently goes up to one twenty, I believe.
Okay.
But it does become an issue of how many kids you could put in the cafeteria and in the space that we have the clubhouse and is it manageable and is it, is it going to be a quality program as we add more and more kids? So, we've kind of capped it at a hundred and that's worked out, we haven't had to turn anyone away, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of a, it fits, that number fits the school pretty well.
Are you, are you continuously self-funded, I mean, are you operating out, out of the profit? I mean, is the school contributing to your budget or are you able to operate solely on your fees?
So, I can take that one, so the, uh, the agreement that we have with Shelburne Community School is that, uh, there's a building rental fee that shows up in your revenue side. So, uh, the school, uh, definitely isn't, uh, funding the program, but we're, we're allocating money back to the school in, in a building rental fee.
I forgot about that.
Yeah. Yeah, and, uh, much like Sue said, uh, we're, you know, that, that part, what makes us unique is that, uh, we like to pride ourselves on being completely collaborative, uh, working with Patty, working with Sue. We're in this together and it's crazy to think that programs, once upon a time, existed in silos, that you can't use our PE balls because they're the school's balls and you can't use our equipment because it's the after-school equipment. So, I mean, it's, it's little.
Something else.
Yeah, it's, it's little, it's little things like that, but it's also, uh, if you look down at the, the very bottom line, I mean, it's, yeah, we tie in academic components, but we also incorporate the socially-emotional components of the, the day that are so integral to the school day. We, we, we adopt those in our after-school program because why do something different? The kids should have consistency, so that's, that's a huge piece of, of what we do.
Can you talk about, so you're in Williston and Heinsberg?
Yes.
And that's Benatrola?
Correct.
Cause, you know, this, I mean, again, as I think about the Act forty-six stuff, so, all this stuff, you know, fundamentally fits in very well together and one of the things that I would at least envision as a piece of the Act forty-six efficiencies is, again, extending this program out across CSSU and then, you know, more broadly speaking, I mean, you're spending a lot of time chasing, you know, people and enrollment and all the rest of that stuff. I mean, you guys have an enrollment function, you have a people management function, you have, I mean, these are all overlapping things that fundamentally, there's a lot of opportunity around efficiencies on and so, to the extent that we can, I think the, the, and talking, I've been talking to Alan for this for a number of years, in fact, I talk, I remember talking to you, Lorian, back when you were director on this, in terms of leveraging something like the enrollment tools that you guys have. in terms of leveraging something like the enrollment tools that you guys have to help support, you know, the work that you're doing, and, and that, to me, feels like, you know, there's obviously some barriers in terms of, you know, who reports to whom and all that sort of stuff that we need to get worked out, but from, you know, excellence in opportunity, you know, across SCS students, whether you're IAS, or whether you're SCAT, or whether you're, whatever, you're still an SCS kid, and how we leverage that as something, and again, I think is a huge opportunity, you know, within both the school and then ultimately CSSU, so, as we become one big CSSD, possibly.
You're using the same buses as the SCAT, so.
Yeah.
I just have to add something here, I mean, we, we actually literally have opened our cupboards to one another, so, so we really, it's, it's been just excellent. I mean, they use our stuff, our stuff, they use the stuff, we use the stuff. I mean, so, it's, it's, and, and it's enabled us to add more things.
I was gonna say, and we've actually added, I mean, it's a wonderful program, I can't say enough good things about it, but we added this year, for example, how many iPad carts, or iPads, a whole cart to our art department? And it's used in collaboration between both IAS and our art teachers. So, it's just a wonderful partnership that way, we've done it a couple different times with just purchasing products.
It's even more than just stuff, a lot of the names that you see on the right, bottom right here, help Patty in, in the management of recess during the school day. So, I mean, just bringing these people in so that they have common expectations, again, it's-
You know, the kids, you have the staff, you know, the routines.
There's so much that makes sense, so.
And, you know, it's, and then you're not, you know, you're not working four-hour shifts, you're working eight-hour shifts.
Exactly.
You can make a living off it as opposed to, you know, all that.
What is the census like from, you know, K one, two, three? Do you have any fourth graders?
So, our clubhouse is third and up. We have a lot of third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders, and some sixth graders.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yeah.
K to two, greater population?
Right, a lot of kindergartners.
Probably sixty-five, thirty-five, around that?
Sixty, forty.
Sixty, forty, yeah.
Of K to two to three and up?
Sixty, K to two, forty, clubhouse, third and up.
So, ultimately, who is IAS? I mean, is it a, is it a business, is it a-
It's a CSSU. It, it runs very similar to your cafeteria program. So, it's just an enterprise one. So, it's, it's all managed, everybody's a CSSU employee, whether you're in Shelburne, whether you're Pat, or Lauren, or any, you know, counselor, director, doesn't matter your title, you're a CSSU employee.
I learn something new every day, I thought you guys were a private enterprise.
Oh, that, well, that's kind of why I'm here, it's a lot of people, a lot of people think that because of the names and, and things like that, but it's, it's always been a CSSU enterprise, it's never been privatized.
So, are the staff covered under a union agreement, or?
No, so, the IAS staff is non-union, much, we, we have many staff members in all of our buildings that are non-union, but they're, they're non-union, they, they have their separate agreement, comes to the CSSU board level, where, much like the other agreements that you've seen before, it just outlines their vacation time and hours and benefits and things like that.
So, why are you non-Charlotte, for example?
It's, it's all school-based. So, the way that Part Two came to be is that way back when, when I became principal at Heinsberg, I had started schools out in South Burlington, and the principal said, "Can you do the same thing here?" And I did the same thing in Heinsberg, and then Shelburne and Williston said, "Wow, this is something we should look at." And so, they approached me. What's that?
There's just been a pull from the individual schools as opposed to a push out from the SCU?
Yeah.
Well, we had our Y program, and so, it took the place of our Y.
But I remember when we, I mean, just kudos to you guys, cause when, you know, we were transitioning from Y to Part Two, and we were limited to fifty students at that point.
Yeah.
And, you know, we had some feedback that, from parents that, you know, "Don't do this, this is, you know," and it's just been, I think, a wonderful program for the families and the students, and it is, as you pointed out, provided revenue to the school. So, it's just really a win-win.
Thank you.
No, it's great, I, I actually think clarifying that piece of the pie would be useful, cause I remember, again, when I led a after-school program, I'm like, wait, I'm, you know, I thought I was sort of, you know, doing it for this private enterprise, and the fact that I'm doing it for CSSU somehow. Not that it makes a huge difference one way or the other, ultimately, it's for the kids, but, you know, I think it makes people, you know, feel differently perhaps about the financial support of the program.
Yeah, absolutely, and Patty and Alan, through, through IAS, they now have individual control on scholarships for students. So, not only do we give a little building rental fee, but we also provide a stipend for students in need. Last year, the, the same amount was available, but it was, it was at my level that decisions were made, and that never seemed right, because I never knew exactly who needed it the most, and now we have a system set in place that I think is really helpful, so. And it just ties in the administrators, and so, when you're sitting in a meeting, Patty can say, "I think this child really needs IAS." She doesn't have to go through me, she just calls me up and says, "Jeff, Joey's gonna start tomorrow." Okay? So. But, as much kudos as I've given to Sue, I don't know if people realize how lucky to have somebody like Pat running the ship, someone who's been in the school with her knowledge and expertise of kids. You won't see anybody better with families, parents, and I think one of the reasons why the program continues to grow, I mean, Lauren was there last year, and he saw what she did. And, two years ago, and then last year, in a much more supportive role, but with Pat there, we can really focus a little bit on Shelburne and a little bit on everybody else, but, I mean, you guys are extremely lucky to have the people that are in this room running your after-school program, so, I just wanted to be sure to acknowledge that.
Do you still get stuck in that corner office by the back door? That's only one minute. Oh, that's good. That's much better. My god.
Wait, part of that bond vote was a new IAS staffer, right?
That's right, absolutely.
And a new gymnasium.
Yes, absolutely.
Creative architecture, that's what it's called.
Yeah.
That was the eleven-point-two bond. We did what we could, we did what we could.
No, my, both my kids were in Part Two before it was imagined, and it was great, you know, it was nice knowing that they were gonna be there, and, you know, all the consistency through the day and stuff like that, so it was awesome. You know, and just, it was funny, just last week when I ran into you and Williston, and, and it's just, you know, so many people in the community helping out so many schools and so many kids, and, and I think, isn't Brooke the counselor here? That's Esther's daughter, yeah. Is she a CVU, she's a CVU student still?
Graduate.
Oh, she's a graduate, okay.
She's a college.
So, she goes CVM, she still comes back to the school and helps with Part Two?
Do we have four or five CVU students currently on staff?
Um, we have a few at Heinsberg.
Yeah. That's a huge connection for us. We, we love having the, the proximity to, to CVU, at least in Heinsberg, and then the kids absolutely love coming back, it's all alumni, I have, so.
Like, I remember one time, I was sitting at Archie's, and I mean, and my kids look up at a football player on the wall, and they're like, "Hey, that's our counselor from Part Two, right there in that picture." So. All those connections coming together, three great things in the community. So, all right, thanks so much for coming in, it's great, really appreciate it. I'm sorry, Jeff, I got your school and your, you know, everything wrong, but. So, we are on to five-point-one, we'll do the principal's report. I need a copy, I printed out, I thought I printed it out, and- My iPad has decided not to work inside this building.
Perfect, oh, that doesn't work though, okay. All right. Yeah, it's on, it is on, but, same, but it's the same thing, yeah. So, just wanna remind you that Shannon Baird is our teacher representative on our PTO, and she does a monthly slideshow for all of the activities that are going on in our classes. It is dependent upon who wants to submit to her, but I welcome you to go to that site so that you can see all the great things that our kids are doing. We had a couple of special events over the last month, Puppets in Education, that was a lot of fun, I hope your kids talked to you about it, but our kindergarten through fifth graders enjoyed a performance per grade, and each group was tailored to the grade. And it's, Puppets in Education is, just basically is a group that teaches children how to keep themselves safe and healthy, and to appreciate the differences that we all have. Sheera Chevrolet, Dan Bookhand is, is, is one of the owners there, I guess, and they supported that in total, so we thank them for that. We also had-
Two kids in the school, two boys.
Yeah, two boys in the school, right, exactly.
I went to that, one of the performances for the-
Fifth graders, it was great, the kids were so engaged in it, they just loved it. Yeah, they really loved it, they had workshops for the fourth and fifth graders, and then K through three had just kind of general performance, so. Really great, thank you. Also, last week was Red Ribbon Week, and we have an annual celebration for that. Our project lead team, our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, LEAD stands for Leadership Education, the anti-drug, and they basically planned the entire thing with the help of Rachel Petraska, our five-through-eight school counselor, and Amy Sayer, who is our CY student SAP counselor. And kids, they had a theme, we, we dressed up, it was a whole school participation really this year, which was great. Also, middle school kids got to meet Helene Neville, who is the woman who has walked the perimeter of the US. That was very inspiring story that she, she talked about. And also, we had our first Mix It Up Day, I think I've talked about Mix It Up Days before, three times a year. All K through eight students get together in different groupings, and they just do a project together, but they really establish some great bonds so that they are, the elders become the mentors for the, for the youngers, so that's a really, a great event. We have grand rounds again this year, we started that last year, John Madden did a math night, probably about a month ago. And we also have Maris Rose, she's doing parenting classes, and really has had great attendance, she's doing a three-week session. So, for three weeks, parents come and they just learn basically parenting skills, and they get to share their stories about their kids, and some of the challenges of raising children, and Maris has some, some great tips for them, so that's a very engaging program. And John Madden helps with that as well as Katie Tyler. And I just wanted to put in a plug for our Student Leadership Council, because John Madden works with them, and they are just a great group. They'll do pretty much anything, fifth graders, there's eight of them, and whenever you have a need, so Lisa Williams called me the other day, and she said, "Oh, we've gotta get all this compost together, because we have done the garden beds, but I don't have anybody to help me get all this compost out." And I said, "Oh, don't you worry, I'll call John, the SLC will do it for us." So, they are just a fantastic group of kids. And test results, so on the next page, yes, I'm doing this right?
Yeah.
Just wanted to share with you our SBACK test results, ELA in math, I'm sure you've looked at them, do people have questions?
I had a question about looking at-
Both ELA and math, when it comes to the sixth grade, I noticed that they drop, and then they go back up again. What happens in sixth grade?
Sixth grade is a new curriculum? I don't know, Jeff, do you wanna talk about that at all?
One of the, we've been looking at this in every school, because if you look at the CSSU numbers, they dropped-
Right.
SU-wide, so it is the one somewhat, somewhat of an anomaly. And one of the things we've noticed in math is it is the transition from Bridges to the CMP program. We don't know if there's a cause-effect there. And to be quite honest, and not, not in Shelburne, but some of the schools, they said, "Yeah, that, that has been a challenging population," and-
The sixth graders?
Some, in some of the schools, and that they felt as though there has been a lot of interventions attempted, and that they've made quite a bit of progress, but that may not reflect proficiency at this point.
And I, I think from an ELA standpoint, I was just gonna say, it, there's definitely more of a focus on the teaching of reading, for example, in fifth grade than there is in sixth grade, because now kids are literally using that skill to learn other concepts. So, I, I'm not sure if that's one of the reasons in ELA, obviously, that dip is not nearly as large as the dip for mathematics, but that could be part of it as well.
I would just say you would be a lot more concerned if there were a dip-
Yep, and it continued.
Yeah.
Than you are if there's a dip and then it goes back up, because that can just be like, there is a mismatch between where you're teaching something and where they're assessing it, and that's the piece that we'll try to figure out if there's like, if that mismatch occurs. But when they bounce right back, that tells you that- Yeah, yeah. That's probably what that's about. Or else it's a challenging-
And careful attention to, next year, the sixth graders who will be seventh graders, and then the new sixth grade, and see if there's a trend.
Right.
One of the interesting things for me, I got on the subject, you know, in terms of talking through all the bond stuff, so I got on the subject of Vermont schools relative to national standards and all this stuff, and, you know, historically, Vermont, some of the top schools in the country, you know, historically, were sort of top five in terms of, you know, performance, and there was, you know, a significant exception this last test year with the transition of the SBACK. And, you know, I don't think our kids got magically dumber in one year, or our schools got dramatically worse, and, you know, in one year, and so, I just wonder if, you know, obviously, there's a transition in any, as teachers have taught one thing for a long time, and then are, you know, learning new processes, learning new curriculum and stuff like that, and I just wonder how, whether you're getting teacher feedback in terms of them feeling, also just, you know, test methodologies change. Is the SBACK something, that is something that is used at a broader number of states?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Many, many more states, but, but we-
You don't see that, if you look at the ELA data, you don't see that in the, if that was true, Matt, you don't see it in the Vermont data.
Right.
If it was a statewide issue, you'd see that same drop in the Vermont data.
I think you saw it in, I don't, I do not remember the, I don't know, Helene, is that?
Well, I was just gonna say that we did very, very, very well on the SBACK compared to what we were anticipating. So, we should, we were anticipating that we would see a drop in our scores on the SBACK, because it is a tougher test, it, it requires kids to think critically, and, you know, problem-solve, analyze, much more than just filling in a little bubble and doing more rote kind of work. And we didn't, we didn't see a drop. Our kids are, these are good scores, I mean, you can see that-
Nationally, they gave, we were told to anticipate forty-one percent proficiency in ELA and thirty-three percent proficiency in math on average, regardless of the grade.
Yeah.
And our scores are significantly higher than that.
Right.
We were also told that there would be a precipitous drop between that and our kneecap performances, and that wasn't the case, in fact, the high schools somehow actually did better.
Oh, really? Great.
And, and I, just a reminder, they also, this was a computerized test, and the kneecap prior to that was a paper pencil test, so, just the idea of kids in grade three getting on a computer and being able to navigate through program, you know, a program that they really had not had a whole lot of experience doing, so, and I just say third, because obviously, by eighth, they have more proficiency in being able to utilize a keyboard and a mouse, but there was a lot of, a lot of navigation skills that were required, so.
One of the challenges to an assessment like this is that you may be saying you're assessing certain standards, but the reality is, you may be assessing one's technology-
Exactly.
Proficiency, and, and it impacts that, the fidelity of the assessment.
Good scores.
Yeah, I think so.
Regardless.
We were thrown-
I think we were in a meeting, and you said that our scores brought up the whole state's scores.
CSSU?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, without question, yeah, without question.
Partly because our scores are really good, and we're really big, so it's the law of big numbers, right, we can-
Does this also, this is part of Common Core, this is the assessment part of Common Core, right? Forty-six states adopted Common Core?
They did, a number of them have pulled out of giving the SBACK, however.
Right.
So, just because you've adopted it, you don't necessarily have to give the SBACK, and it's a, it's a political, you know-
Right.
Button.
Of course.
But, but it does-
It's probably fair to say that those who were worried about the assessments are the ones who pulled out.
Right.
I mean, honestly, that's the truth.
Does that, does it give us a broader comparison?
Yes.
It does.
Broader-
Right. We haven't seen that yet.
Not yet, we have not, we're very new to the data, they're very new to providing the data.
I think it's because it's year one, and, you know, they spent a year telling us, "Don't, you know, oversell this, don't be crazy about that you might see a drop."
So, we can't do that comparison?
Right now, we don't have the national context.
We will be able to.
Yeah, good.
But in the past, we've only been able to have a regional context.
Right.
Just in terms of how, no, go ahead, Patty, sorry.
Well, I saw that you just turned the paper, Matt, so, were you, did you have a question on SBACK or on kneecap science?
Just, well, practically speaking, just in terms of, I'm probably moving very long, you know, practically speaking, you know, the, the- you know, practically speaking, you know, the, the promise of testing has always been that you circle back with kids who are more challenged in specific study areas. So how, you know, practically speaking, other than us being a curiosity, how do we, how does this become, fall into Act, I'm forgetting my acts here.
Act Seventy-Seven.
There you go. Act Seventy-Seven in terms of-
My job, I know that.
Yes, there you go. I'm impressed, I'm impressed.
And he knows it now.
Exactly, in terms of, you know, creating the, not the IEP, but the equivalent-
Personalizing.
PLPs for, you know, in terms of having, again, real-time feedback, curriculum development, homework assignment, all that.
Yeah, the promise of this, and I think some of it's being realized, is that for the first time, we have data that's connected specifically to the standards and we are moving to a proficiency-based system. And now the challenge is to take this data and other data that's important to us and make it live in the classroom. So students are practicing this and living this on a daily basis. And for the first time, I think, at least in my mind, I find a real relevant connection that I don't have to sell, it's not contrived even to high schoolers in some respects, that this is what you do every day and we're just asking you to demonstrate it in a slightly different way.
Students are taking this test.
And the more we align our instruction with some of these best practices that are reflected here, the assessment will not feel all that much out of, all that out of the norm to, to students when they take it.
I mean, I would, yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, I am a big fan of benchmarking and getting feedback in terms of how you're doing and, and all that stuff, you know. I can see how people are averse to teaching to the test and all that, but at the end of the day, again, Common Core is about determining a broad set of curriculum that people wanna learn for twenty-first century skills and assessing them on progress. And, you know, it doesn't mean you're intrinsically more valuable or not valuable depending on your score. It's, again, it's a way for schools to better tailor what they're doing towards the individual students' needs and that's, that's what we should be doing, so, great.
Yeah, absolutely. So the next page, our fourth grade kneecap science test results that we got. Those were given last spring, if you recall. And on the fourth grade test, I will brag that we were number nine in the state, so we've gone up. And as you can see, the one, to me, the most significant factor there is that we have six percent of our students who receive proficient with distinction, and that's the highest in the state.
The leadership, Patty.
So, I thought that that was amazing, so. And then if you look at the back, we have our eighth grade- Sure.
I would circle another number, which is two percent substantially below proficient, which is, you know, half from the, from previous years.
Exactly.
So that's important, too.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you for reminding me of that, absolutely.
Good leadership.
Thank you, Jeff. And then on the back page, some more good leadership. We also scored number seven in the state for our eighth grade science tests. And unfortunately, we didn't have that proficient with distinction, but we're, we're working on that. But really good, 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 solid scores. So we were really pleased with that. Always can reach higher and, and we'll strive to do that with our, with our new facilities, helping to support that.
The only thing I would notice here, Patty, which you see across the nation, is much stronger at fourth grade than at eighth grade, right?
Yeah.
You see this trend of STEM stuff degrading as kids go through their education, so.
Yeah, we got, we've got room to grow, there's no doubt about it. I'm excited to do it, though. Yep?
Jeff is doing a major focus on that.
Not a problem unique to you, but it's interesting, it's the same challenges.
Yep, exactly. And then our enrollment is still nice and healthy at seven hundred seventy-five students. I did check with Patty Spagnolo today to see about incoming K for next year because we're starting to have that conversation. So that number is a healthy, high fifties number. We changed it. I thought it was in the seventies, but Patty said, "Oh, no, I was counting some kids who were born before October first, just in case they wanna come." And I said, "Well, I don't think you can do that quite yet." So we, we've refined that number, but it's like fifty-seven, I think, right now, so.
I was thinking-
Any questions?
No, I was, well, one thing I wanted to say is that, speaking of science, I did see the article in the Free Press yesterday about your environmental club that did the survey on cars idling.
Yes.
Which was really fun.
I didn't read the article, so.
You should, you should go read it.
I will.
It's, it's pretty funny, like, they played up the fact that the kids didn't let on to anybody what they were doing and they were just kinda, you know, nobody wanted, like, they were kinda sly about what they were doing, which I thought was cool.
Okay.
So that's, and, you know, they did some calculations and I thought that was-
Nice.
Pretty nice. And they caught somebody idling their car for fifty-
Twenty-seven. Yeah, what was it, tw- yeah.
I thought it was like, it was really high, so.
Did they get a protector in the line?
I don't think they went that far, but that's a great question.
It sounded like they didn't get into enforcement, they were just-
No. Right, they were just like, yeah, no, there was no enforcement, no camera, no-
But that's what, like, you know, you guys, we were talking about cell phones last year and you guys were like, "Well, you know, it's not so much, you tell the parents not to use cell phones in the car, you talk to the kids about it." So the kids will talk to the parents while they're doing it in the car. So I finally got a chance to get back and I had some kids who were asking what they could do for the bond vote and I told them, "Tell your parents to vote." So, and then I mobilized one of the, one of the seventh or fifth graders to email all their friends to tell their parents to vote, so, which was fun.
It's awesome.
But-
Tell them no.
No?
Get out and vote. That's right. There was one other thing, but I forget what I was gonna say. Go ahead. Anybody else? No?
Anything else I'll say in addition is in terms of- Circling back, so we talked about the nucleus of all the after-school activities earlier tonight and, you know, fundamentally identifying. So I know some of the work you guys always do is, and there's, we talked about summer school program before and having an after-school program being a great opportunity to kind of extend the PLP model to those kids who, you know, are, you know, below proficient in science, that was like, hey, let's find a super cool afternoon program that also reinforces those, you know, evidence-based learning, you know, skills and all that sort of thing.
Absolutely, good point, good point. And I will say that we, the push for NGSS science this year in younger grades is another really big change. So I, today, for example, just watching a science lesson that was delivered by one of our kindergarten teachers to this, to students. And Stephanie Conowitz, who is our, what's her title?
Science coach.
Science coach, thank you. For CSSU was in there helping the teacher as she was delivering the lesson. And the inquiry skills and what they were doing was just absolutely amazing. It was fantastic to watch. And seven other teachers were able to benefit from that. So, those models are just so powerful and important for, you know, for science education, so, great.
Really?
Thank you.
So, move on to five point two. Which is the CSSU debrief. I know Bob and Kathy were both there and, so the, we did have a presentation on the SU core budget, which was under significant challenge. I think it was up, total, was it five point eight percent?
Five point eight.
Yeah, so they're going through that a second time. We did have some board training on voting and there's a link to that on the, on the agenda that you can go in and check out. We had the same debrief of Act Forty-Six and reaffirmation committees. And, I think that was it. And I think Matt and Tim both know that Helene will be out in January and Megan is our superintendent for the month of January.
Oh, I was, that was interesting, 'cause I was seeing Megan, I thought, oh, she'd make a great superintendent someday. Guess it's sooner than I expected.
For a month. Practice a little.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, it's nice to know that come February, we won't have to put up with her anymore.
Well.
So the other part of that was the projected population, projected enrollment. Everybody get a chance to see these numbers in their packet and how they're projecting from the seven seventy-eight we have now, it will grow in ten years to eight hundred and thirty-seven, which ten years ago it was eight hundred and thirty-one. So, we're coming right back down and going right back up. Oh, which, that's what I was gonna say, I wonder if we could, would it be helpful to do a blast out to folks in town and do like a Survey Monkey of, are you going to have a kindergartner next year?
Sure.
And then have a place for people to put, you know, put information in there so that people-
People have done that, other schools have done that.
When they're in a situation where they're just, you know, really wanting to know what the number's gonna be.
Yeah.
'Cause I think it's a hundred, you can do a hundred responses for free, does that sound right?
No, I don't-
That sounds right.
The Survey Monkey we did in the-
No, it's a number of questions, you can have unlimited, I think, sorry, go ahead.
Didn't, I mean, we didn't pay anything for that, did we, in the spring?
Uh, I paid for that.
Did you?
Yeah. But it was only like twenty dollars.
Yeah, we paid for it, but it's like, yeah, it's like twenty bucks a month or something like that. It's not a lot, but I don't know if it's, there's a limited number.
But I think, I thought like if you had less than a hundred responses, it was free. So like, if we're only looking for eighty kindergartners-
Yeah, as long as we get to one hundred, we're fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think the challenge-
Hey, we're only gonna get a hundred students. Then a hundred fifteen show up and then whatever.
Well, that's, I think the challenge is people grow, go, moving in during the summer.
Yeah, that is-
Moving out and moving in during the summer.
That is the question.
Not making a final decision as to whether their kid's gonna go to kindergarten, but-
Talking about evidence-based testing, it's hard to know what your, what your response rate is, you know, so fifty people say, I mean, it's impossible for us to say, well, we're only gonna have fifty kids because we know we're not kindergarten.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, you try that out. First quarter financial management report, looks good. It's good to be ahead, good to be winning in the first quarter.
Was the capital fund part of that? The EFMR?
Uh, I don't, that's separate.
Okay.
What was the question?
Well, I, I was looking at this and it's, it's part of the, you know, the program somewhere.
Yep.
And, I think we need to do some tightening up because it, it's still got two thousand thirteen total revenues here. And, you know, obviously, they just used a template.
Yep.
Updated an old one. But the beginning balance starts at a hundred and six thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven and then it's got these, these revenue, interest, playground, LWCF grant, and then it's got total revenues of a hundred and ten thousand. It just doesn't, I, I can't, I can't understand how this model's supposed to work.
So that's, so the revenue, well, what those revenues are from is donations and the grant that came in to pay for the playground. That's what that's showing.
So the PPTF is, is, that's the parent teacher or the parent? Sixty-one thousand was con- private contributions?
Right, in the trust.
Okay, oh, the, the naming rights we sold.
Yes.
Okay, I got you. And that now makes sense, okay.
And the grant that we, uh-
So it begins with a total balance of a hundred and six.
I'm just writing this down.
So, he's joking about the naming rights.
Honestly, I'm writing this down, I'm going, I'm not gonna say.
I saw that, okay, continue.
I know, I know, I don't wanna feel stupid, so.
So it comes up with a hundred and ten thousand total.
Right.
And then we deduct out of that the anticipated expenses. Total expenses of two hundred and six thousand. I mean, it, the, the model just doesn't-
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I don't have the paperwork, but I know all the funds aren't in yet, the matching grants and things like that, so until-
Okay.
-both sides of the ledger are complete, it's probably- They're not gonna make a lot of sense.
But the real concern is anticipated balance, as of June thirtieth next year, is ten thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Is this, is this all of our funds?
This is a playground fund.
This is it, 'cause it says Shelburne Capital Fund.
So the top line that you just talked about is the playground.
Okay, it's got architect two thousand fifteen and then it's got playground.
Right. So that's all playground.
So it's the architecture services involved with the playground.
Well, all I'm thinking of is, every year when we do an audit, the auditors tell us we should have a balance of about three hundred thousand dollars in our capital funds.
Yeah, this is not our fund.
That's a different thing.
There's more than that.
There's another fund.
This isn't fund.
That's just what I, I just wanted to make sure that, 'cause-
Yes.
Would have been a little concerning.
I didn't understand where this came from.
So we did just, but, just following up on this, I just got a note last week that we got, that's this forty-four thousand dollars that we received from the state for our matching grants. And that's a portion of what we applied for. And I think there's another sixteen-
Twenty, yeah, about, or sixteen, yeah.
Yeah, there's sixteen thousand, yeah.
Sixty thousand.
So that-
Depending on what's spent.
Depending, right.
I mean, it's-
Up to sixty thousand.
Right. You gotta spend it to make it.
Yes.
That's right.
Put you right there.
So there's, there should be another page somewhere that shows what the whole funds are.
Or fund balance.
Your fund balance.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, we, we should know what that is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Change in fund balance.
So that is a-
The next page shows change in fund balance.
Right.
Three months ending September thirtieth.
That's the same, in the bottom.
I guess it's food service.
Yeah, yeah, that's food service.
That's food service, the one that you're looking at there.
Right.
I'll make a note of that, to add that, each time we do FMR, include what's your fund balance.
That's a good idea. 'Cause those are separate accounts, like the food service and the playground, and they're all-
Right.
I just don't know enough about where those accounts-
Yeah, 'cause there's a construction fund.
Right.
And, and we, you know, that's where what we used 165,000 of to, to buy down the taxing.
Exactly, exactly, yep.
So the first page shows the general, total general fund. Is that what I was looking for? So go back, the page before the playground. Shows the total general fund.
Yeah.
And it says projected is 325,000, no, 125,115. Are, are those the numbers you're looking for?
Those are expenditures.
Yeah, those would be expenditures for this year, but the fund balance, I don't see it in here.
Okay.
Having been through several of these at CDU, I don't recall the fund balance being part of these documents.
I think it usually is.
But it will be something when you start having your budget conversations. Because you wanna know what's, what's behind you.
Absolutely, yeah.
And what can be applied-
Exactly.
To, to the current budget.
Okay.
And Bobby, right, they, they do suggest, there's a percentage of your overall budget they would suggest maintaining in your general fund.
Usually the thing that we're looking at, yes. When we put in 165, then we give up 116.
Right, that's what I was looking at.
That's not your fund balance.
Right.
Where's Bobby's?
Yeah. We can certainly get that number for it, and we will know it as soon as you start your budget.
Right.
For sure.
It'll be part of the budget buddy packet.
Yes.
Okay, so we get on FMR? So we already did 5.4, the Act 46 committee. So 5.5, talk about facilities. So Facilities Committee met yesterday to, we had ciders and donuts to celebrate the hard work of getting it passed. It was very nice. Delicious donuts. And essentially, so we're quite sure what to do. And, you know, what is, you know, their charge has essentially ended. They got the bond passed, you know, for what we had tasked them for. But we sat down and we met with Doran Whittier, and David Hillman was there, and Bob was there, and Chris Kapsalis brought a new member, Mike Lynch. And we talked about having a general contractor versus a construction manager. We had a really great conversation. And I think that what we'd like to do is keep that facilities group going to help make, you know, just to help in the decision process and in the communication process as we go through the facilities and the bond construction. One thing that the Facilities Committee will not do is why I think their charge should not be is to evaluate every fit and finish and item in the, in the building. What Bob recommended is that he, you know, Bob Mason, Alan and Patty, and one member of the board would be on sort of a frontline contact with Doran Whittier. You know, very, working with them very closely to manage day-to-day decisions and, you know, any sort of scope issues that come up and things that folks can, you know, be in tune with the construction process and, and, and do that. The gentleman to my left volunteered to be the board member in that four-person group, and I think that's great 'cause I think Tim understands a lot about construction, and you've had a lot to add during the conversations that I've been in, so.
Right down the road as well?
Yeah, you know, I think that would be great. I think the Facilities Committee will continue to meet every two to three weeks with the architect to present, and the small group to present status and make sure we're on budget and on, on schedule and making good decisions and things like that. And then, you know, I would think, you know, maybe it would be efficient if you would just present to the rest of the board at every board meeting.
Facilities update, sure.
Yeah, the facilities update.
And that would be very good, and, I mean, I think both, both will be good from a quickness of decision-making, but also just from a, you know, having people, having the continuity between Dave Hillmans of the world and, you know, the, the Jeans and everyone to sort of just keep the project on. A lot of, a lot of money getting spent, and it's just nice to have community input to the extent it's appropriate.
Is there a contract with Doran Whittier for this phase of the project?
So there, there is a, there's an agreement in place for them to get started, and then we are working through the legal contract to get everything, you know, official. And that's, Bob is working on that, and it will come to us for approval.
Timeline next meeting?
Um, it's gotta be soon.
Do we know, you know, realistically, are we hoping to do the roof next summer or that sort of? I, I, my impression was design all, you know, through next spring, out to bid, sort of late spring.
It looks like with the schedule he has right now, all bids coming in, in the end of July of ne- end of July, 16.
So we probably wouldn't be doing the roof next summer.
Well, there was gonna be an early-
Early release for certain things.
Or a release for some thing. We talked about the roof, maybe doing a portion of it that's not gonna get touched in the D and E wing. So to get that done in next summer's construction season and to get it out early, because it's an attractive time to put a bid on the street.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, getting bids out early for the roof and for also the reconfiguration, you know, of the space where if kids come out of D, where are they gonna go?
Existing space, so.
Are there gonna be windows done in other, other areas than the D and E wings?
Everywhere except for-
Everywhere except for the-
B, right?
B wing, yeah.
Not B.
B's, no, the, the Kiva wing, everywhere except for the Kiva.
So everything but B.
Right, everything but B, exactly, right.
So like the music wing, the art wing down there, those will get new windows.
So that could be done sooner rather than later, or?
Well, I think it kinda goes back to the conversation of construction manager versus general contractor.
Okay, it'll be their call.
And out of the-
On the timing.
You know, Facilities Committee, Committee yesterday, it was pretty much unanimous that we think construction manager is the way to go on this pro, you know, on the project. So, you know, engaging a construction manager soon and getting them on the team will kinda be the first order of business. And then at that point, I think they'll decide how the scoping will, you know, what the timing is on certain components. But until we get that person on our team who's gonna basically run the job, it's probably too early to commit to what we're gonna start with.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, there's a thousand questions. Like I wanted to ask a bunch of questions, like, can we do that, can we do the roof this? You know, but if we do that, then we have to put this through the roof, and we don't wanna do that. So, you know, it's a big scheduling issue, and we learned there is a state process for getting a contractor. It's not very invasive, but there are certain rules in play so that, you know, it sounds to me like they're all pretty much good ideas for choosing the right team to work on your school. So, you know, get a subpar contractor. So I, I mean, I think it's great to have Dave Hillman and his expertise and keep him involved. We are gonna, they are gonna meet again two weeks from yesterday, which will be November 30th, 4:15. And you're gonna keep, you're gonna keep going to those as long as you can, correct? Okay.
Yep.
Unless somebody else wants to be back on it, so that's funny.
Kathy's looking excited.
You had a quick question, Mel, or?
Nope.
All right. So, have you got everything there?
Yeah, I think that's-
Next thing on the item is baseline budget. It's just my role to distribute them to you today so that you can have it in preparation for the first meeting.
So is the 3.3% of total budget increase, does that reflect the-
Special ed stuff as well?
Well, so we got a number that said we needed to get, you know, if we look at allowable growth percentages of 2.1%, we need to take $52,000 out. Is the $52,000 increase the, like, the 3.3, it's in there in that 3.3?
But I think that went down, didn't it?
And my understanding is that reflects the 7-point-whatever-it-was number that special ed originally was. So this should change as we continue to scrub the special ed budget.
Okay.
But you're right, that's what that was to start with.
I think, I'm not sure, but I don't think he's had time to adjust those numbers.
I don't believe so, yeah.
So wow, that's really great. Our baseline budget is only 3.3%, and last year we came in at 4.8 after cutting everything out.
That's right. So we're in good shape.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys saw the chart of where everyone else is on this?
Yes.
Did you see that? So Heinsberg is net zero.
Zero.
They're good. But the problem comes up with, like, CDU is-
I can give you, CDU one's gone up, it's almost a million dollars they have to cut.
Charlotte is up.
900,000, something, it's been adjusted.
What's the drive?
Charlotte, Charlotte's 247,000, I believe. And Williston is 537, 47.
In terms of to get to.
What you would have to cut to get to the allowable growth number. And that's without these special ed numbers factoring in yet.
What's the big driver for CDU, for example? 'Cause they were-
Drop in enrollment? That's what's driving all of those, the per pupil ratio, particularly the formula that takes two years. We had 1,300 kids last year, we have 60 fewer kids this year.
Do we know why?
So you have the same fixed cost, and you have fewer students.
5% fewer.
So these are like the, the school classes that we saw in 98, 2005, those are starting, those are coming down and they're filtering through.
But also, I mean, healthcare, almost 8%. And contracts at 3.25, and that's 80% of your budget.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, it's my wife always says, could be worse.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, no, at least we're within sitting distance, as it were.
Yeah, that's true. So discussion matters, here we go. Policy, any inputs on any of the policies or concerns, any comments you wanna note and have Matt bring those to his policy meeting?
Ready, I'm right here for you, Tim.
It's all good, man.
So 6.2 communications boards corner. Have you put in the solar article yet?
I have not, I have not, so I can bang that up this week.
Okay, so there was that. Was there another one we brought up? Or was that what we were talking about in the meeting? It was the solar article. And then there is an Act 46 article that's coming, that's gonna be written by the communications committee. So that's, that'll be in the next few weeks as well.
You know, we may wanna revisit after the successful bond vote shortly, you know, what is the timeframe? 'Cause I assume people might think, oh, they voted for a bond, contractors not there yet.
That's true.
That'd be very good, yeah, actually.
That's a good idea. Just kinda review, thank you for the votes, review the timeline.
Yeah.
Next steps, just a general of what's happened from here to there, yeah.
And the other thing I did, I mean, go back to that, facilities and, you know, we had that chat with Bob Monday morning. I almost missed.
I didn't take it.
And I, you know, I think Alan and Patty are both on board with like making sure that, you know, the spaces that are gonna be created in the school while things are under construction, you know, I think, was it Elaine or was it Bob that said everyone is gonna be inconvenienced a little bit? Not just the folks that are moving, but the folks that are in other parts of the building. And that's gonna happen, but when we come out of this, it's gonna be so much better.
Absolutely.
But yeah, that's a great article idea, and I have a lot of that information in the timeline that we got. Be more than half of that, you know?
I think I heard a volunteer.
But I also, I haven't yet thanked you publicly for those great signs that you made for-
Those were terrific.
I got two up in my house, they're very nice.
Thank you.
You need more, I'll make you more.
All right. Those were so great, I mean, like, just that, just being out on Harbor Road when everyone was waving and just being out there, it was a great time.
It was fun, yeah, very much.
And thank you signs were a great idea, too.
Yeah, the thank you signs were just great.
I gotta put them all to the inside of my garage every time I come home, just gonna look at them.
Yeah, I think I might take one, Tim.
So move on to action matters, 7.1, could I get a motion to approve purchase services?
So moved.
Seconded.
Second, any discussion on, on these? So, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. And we learned in our training that if you're going to recuse yourself, you-
Or abstain.
Or abstain, you need to leave the room. The second action matter, can I get a motion to put a January 19th meeting on our calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Second, discussion, this is a meeting, I think, like I said, it's, it's solely to get us back together to discuss Act 46. Patty, I don't even think you would even need to attend. You and you can relay that to Alan. This is coming here to meet and discuss the report. I assume the report will be distributed in advance, it'll be a draft report, you know, based on the timeline. We need to get a draft into the AOE in January, February timeframe for them to review, give us comments back. And we submit the final one in April. So, any comments about the 19th? That is a Monday, the 20th is our budget forum with our good friends on the select board.
Can we go first?
I don't know.
Is it seven at the town board, town hall? You think, what time?
On the 20th?
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
You don't know?
That's January. I feel like we went first last year.
Yeah.
Either you go first at town meeting, or you go first at, ooh, that's it.
I think it alternates in a year.
Whatever, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, who knows? I think we should just ask them to go first both times.
That's right.
Just tell them what we want. That's Dave Connery speaking, that's not the school board speaking.
There's a mistake on that February 17th, um, meeted, meeting, a regular meeting. That's a Wednesday.
Okay.
So I sent Sandy a note about that today, so she'll probably send that out to be revised.
She said Jan, January 19th is-
January 19th, yeah.
Actually a Tuesday.
Yeah, it's a Tuesday.
Oh, it is, okay, so it's 19th is a Tuesday, but our board, our meeting with the town is the 20th. I did complain that.
Right, right, right.
Sorry.
But the February meeting is a Wednesday, and it shouldn't be. February 17th.
Okay.
That's noted on the agenda here.
Okay.
Which would be the resumption of our regular board meetings-
Yep.
-in February.
Yep. Yeah, so, all those in favor of a January 19th meeting?
Here, aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? None, all right, and we'll get Sandy to straighten those things out.
Yeah, she said, she said she sent me back.
Take it a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good. Next meeting, so we've had this thing up here, December 8th, December 22nd, and then today I just found out that Patty scheduled the SES Christmas party for December 22nd.
We did. Except it only goes until it's 3:30 to 5:30.
Yeah. Yep.
What, what, I'm sorry, what?
The 22nd is our second budget meeting, and that's also the SES Christmas party. So we could try to-
Do you wanna make a change?
We could try to change it, it's all about Elaine and Bob.
I can try to change, well.
What time are the budget meetings?
Four. So, I mean, we could, I don't know. Is there another time that day we can meet? Could we do an early morning one that day? I don't know. Talk to Elaine and Bob and reschedule that.
I can talk to them.
All right.
Which day?
22nd.
December?
Yeah. And I think with that, I got a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, wait, no.
Nope, too late.
We need to do executive session, that's right. So do we re, do we go back into session?
We rescind it.
We didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't vote, okay. So we're going to go into executive session, we need to talk to Patty. And then we'll adjourn from executive session. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Everybody, appreciate it.
Anything to sign tonight, or no? Uh, I don't think I have anything, let me just check, I'm glad you asked. I'm pretty sure I think this was all stuff.